Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Lynn Lewis.
Here. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is a consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held October the eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three in the amount of five million, six hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred seventy-three dollars, ninety-four cents.
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
All right, thank you both. We have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider rezoning application. Excuse me, number RZ one zero two nine located in the northeast quarter of section fifteen, township ten north, range three west, being north of northwest Fifth Street and west of I thirty-five service road, AKA Shopping Center District. Excuse me. Shopping Center District with a permissive use for gasoline sales light and approve ordinance number fourteen dash twenty-three application by KGS KSI.
Mayor and council, this property is located north of Northwest Fifth Street and west of the I thirty-five service road. The address is six oh one Northwest Fifth Street. The property is currently zoned C four, planned Shopping Center District. It is developed with a gas station and convenience store that has been vacant for several years. In two thousand twenty-one, the Moore City Council approved updates to the zoning code that placed all automotive uses as a use on review in most commercial zoning districts, and this includes the C four zoning district. With this change in the zoning code and the length of time that the subject property has been vacant, the rezoning is required to consider a permissive use for this property for a gas station and convenience store to comply with the current zoning ordinance. The envisioned Moore twenty forty plan calls for this location to be regional center. Land uses in regional center designation include high intensity commercial uses that thrive on visual and vehicular access. These uses typically offer their goods and services to a larger regional population. This application was reviewed as to its conformance with the envisioned Moore twenty forty plan because gas stations along the interstate are considered to be regional commercial in nature, and this location is in a highly commercialized area by the interstate. An amendment to the comprehensive plan is not necessary, and staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we know what level of remodeling or anything they're gonna do there?
I do not know. The applicant is here if you have questions for him.
Do, that's fine.
You wanna ask him? You wanna ask the applicant?
No, that's fine. It won't bear on it. Do we know the branding on it?
Phillips sixty-six.
Okay.
I almost said Texaco, but I knew that wasn't. Phillips sixty-six.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item passes. Item number four is consider approval of scope of work agreement with Lloyd Studio LLC in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars for the budget development of the Phillips sixty-six park to be located at twelfth and Whispering Oaks Road.
Mayor and council, the scope of this, of work for this eleven point five acres of land is to obtain a civil survey, provide guidance on all legal restrictions of the property, and outline the steps required to create a guiding plan for the park. After the completion of the guiding plan, scope of work agreed upon, and a budget established, a separate proposal or construction documents, bidding and construction observation will be presented. Recommend approval.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of a contractual agreement for the city to provide dispatch services for emergency medical calls for the Norman Regional Hospital Authority doing business as Mstat.
Mayor, council, this is a routine contract renewal with the Norman Regional Hospital and the city of Moore to provide dispatch services for their ambulance service within our community. There is a slight fee increase to Norman Regional Hospital in this contract based over last year, based on calls for service. We would recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. The motion.
Thank you, thank you both. Thank you, chief. Would you call for the vote if there's no other discussion?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider a budget amendment to budget additional sales tax and increase the fleet maintenance budget.
Mayor and council, the proposed budget amendment is just a budget for new equipment that's needed for the fleet maintenance facility. We hadn't asked for that during the original budget request just because the building wasn't close to being constructed, and we didn't know exactly what it was, all the equipment that we wanted to purchase. So this amendment takes care of that, and the additional sales tax is money that we've already collected. Recommend approval.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider a budgeted amendment to budget court settlements related to the Fourth Street Underpass Project.
Mayor and council, this will be paid out of bond funds for that project, and these weren't previously budgeted because we didn't know what the settlements might be. So this reflects that, recommend approval.
All right, thank you.
Brex, I have a question. How many more do we have that we're still waiting on wrapping up?
We have, uh, three, I think.
Great, thank you. Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. Wit, any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item passes. Item number eight is consider authorizing staff to return thirty-four rugged laptop computers for marked patrol vehicles previously purchased off state contract number SW one zero two zero D from Dell Corporation Technologies in the amount of seventy-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents and purchase thirty-four rugged laptop computers with GPS off state contract number SW one zero two zero D from Dell Technologies in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars, eighty-eight cents for a price difference of two thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars, sixty-two cents.
Yes, mayor and council, when we got these laptops in and started testing them, we found out that the GPS didn't work. It's because Dell did not quote us the units with GPS. So we tried getting other options, like getting the GPS and installing ourselves, and they do not sell it. So the option they gave us was to turn these back in and purchase additional, or purchase new ones with.
They're giving us what we paid for them.
I'm sorry?
Are they giving us what we paid for them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be, it's just an RMA for what we've, for what we've got. And then the difference is about seventy-four dollars a laptop for the GPS unit.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approving change orders number one through five with Allen Construction, or Contract, excuse me, in the total estimated amount of fifty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars for channel erosion control, traffic, bound surface, course rock for temporary public access during removal and replacement of driveways and streets and adjustment of manholes and meter boxes to grade and requirements of a special inlet structure for the Eastern Avenue Rehabilitation Project.
Mayor and council, these change orders are the result of, on the plans we showed as an example, traffic-bound course rock, we needed to go ahead and provide access to the driveways and so forth. And we had a bunch, we had several inlets and, and that were required. And in one instance, we mislabeled the type of inlet, and so we did not have a pay item for that type of inlet, and so we needed to provide a pay item to do that. All of these items are needed to do the project, and, and the way that we came up with the prices for the change order where basically we went back to the ODOT's last bid listings that they've had for the last couple of months and used the prices for the best and low bids that were received. The one item that we did ask for a change for, on was a erosion control. We're extending a box structure, and it's in an area where what we showed was a, a silt fence or a silt berm to be able to protect the area. And reminding ourselves after the fact that, you know, we're in the Thunderbird watershed. We decided to make sure that we're kosher with ODEQ, that we, we are going in with rock protection for the erosion. And so the overall cost is less than one percent of the overall project, and we would recommend that you approve these change orders.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Lynn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene a public hearing. Item number ten is receive public input regarding proposed curbside recycling program.
Mayor and council, before the speakers come up, just to kinda reiterate what's been said before, Republic has given us a proposal of four dollars and thirty cents a month. It would be a mandatory charge for our residents. The, we would reduce the services at the recycle center, make it a cardboard only, and with the savings of that, we would pass that on to our residents. So the cost per residence would be three dollars and ninety cents per month. Those, the senior citizens that are currently eligible for the senior citizen discount would also participate in this, so their rate would be a dollar ninety-five per month. It would be, as they said, pick up on the regular trash day every other week. And so, I mean, the agenda item tonight was for public input, and so we're at that point.
So what type of container is proposed for this?
The poly cart.
Regular, just like the trash, poly carts, okay.
There's several people signed up on this. Leanne Fellows.
Good evening. I'm not used to speaking in public, so please bear with me.
If you could state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Leanne. I live on January Place. I'm a resident, I'm homeowner and small business owner in Ward One. My family and I use the current recycling center quite frequently. For us, it's frequently, it's hard, as busy people with full-time jobs, to make it out there as often as we'd like. So we store it in our garage, and then we store it in our car, and then we drive it over when we remember or when we have time. We actually use it about once a month, which is significantly more than the number of times we put our black poly cart to the curb. We're able to save on garbage bags because we barely ever produce enough waste to put it by the curb. My family and I would obviously like for you to implement a curbside recycling program. Number one, it would be extremely convenient. Secondly, based on the prices that you gave and the ones that I saw online, it would be cheaper than a second poly cart. It would actually save several dollars. If your neighborhood is any, anything like mine on Mondays or trash day there, most families have two poly carts by the curb that are filter overflowing, especially with cardboard boxes and plastics. And I think that we will see that as more and more people will get boxes from Amazon and other companies. I know there have been, there has been some concern about recycling rates of particularly plastic. I wanna touch on aluminum and cardboard and paper. The recycling rates for those are extraordinarily high in the United States. Aluminum is cheaper to recycle than producing it new. It's actually cheaper by ninety-five percent. And I'm looking at my note, eighty percent of U.S. aluminum production is actually recycled aluminum. Plastic is another story. The numbers that you see often refer to the total amount of plastic produced and what is actually recycled. For those that are not aware, sixty percent of plastics produced are actually in our carpet, in our clothes, in our furniture. It's impossible to recycle, and that's not relevant here either. The other forty percent is actually used for packaging. The majority of those forty percent is for packaging plastics number three to seven. Those are very hard to recycle, and if you look at the numbers, it's pretty dismal. I think you know that, and I think the waste companies and the recycling companies know that as well, which is the reason why you currently and in the future, should this pass, only accept plastics number one and two, for which the recycling rate is fairly high. I do ask that if you do implement this, that you educate the public. The symbol with the three arrows that you see on nearly everything is very misleading. It's on plastic wrappers, it's on bubble mailers, and it's on yogurt packs and sour cream jars, and those are not recyclable, and it could contaminate loads. So I know you already do so on your website. I would think it would be a great idea to also do in the mailers that come with the water bill. I wanna briefly read something. It says, what are the benefits of recycling? According to the EPA, the benefits of recycling are as follows. Reduces the amount of waste sent to landfills and incinerators. Conserves natural resources such as timber, weight, water, and minerals. Prevents pollution by reducing the need to collect new raw materials. Saves energy. Supports American manufacturing. Conserves valuable resources. Helps create jobs in the recycling and manufacturing industries in the United States. This is not a random website. This is the City of Moore website, so not to be facetious, but if you truly stand by what you publicize on your formal website, I would hope that you would also encourage residents, want to encourage residents to do curbside recycling. And I think that you will see more people recycle than are currently doing so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Poiser.
Poiser?
He's on his way.
Okay, sorry.
He's coming, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My wife and I moved here this last May, so we're new residents, and I really enjoy coming to the city council meeting to learn a lot more about the city that we now hope to live in for many, many years. A few weeks ago, a lady and a man presented this recycling to the city council and that, if I remember correctly, tonight was gonna be the night for comments. I don't have nearly the information that the lady just presented to you. But what I wanted to present to you was the city of Mayor of Moore, I beg your pardon, charges eleven dollars and fifty cents for the first trash can and seven dollars for the second. In other words, eighteen dollars and fifty cents for one month. Times two would be thirty-seven dollars a month. In Ventura County, where we moved from, we have three trash cans. One was gray for recycling, one was gray, black for trash, and one was green for all of your grass trimmings. Because I'm a senior, the bill is for a two-month period. It was fifty-eight dollars. Without the ten percent senior discount, it was about sixty-five dollars. So this is just general information that I wanted to give to you that, based upon the information that you just gave tonight with the charges, three dollars and ninety cents and a dollar ninety-five for seniors, I think adding the recycling can to the weekly pickup is a very, very reasonable cost that you're presenting to the constituents of Moore. If you want copies of these, I'd be glad to provide the originals so you can make copies. So use it as a comparison of what other cities do charge their constituents and what Moore is presenting to the city members here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Barry Williams.
Hi. Barry Williams, ten sixty-one Northwest Sixth Street in Moore. You all have one of these. Dear council members, curbside recycling is among us again. Some people that live in Moore would like to see this offered in Moore. Other metro areas offer curbside recycling, and since they have it, so should we. But there is a charge for convenience, and others think that everyone should be charged for their convenience. There is an additional cost to all who reside in households, which some people may not be able to afford. We have visited the curbside recycling program in the past. We voted, and the residents of Moore chose to not participate in the program. It's now twenty twenty-three, and the subject has come up again. Apparently, we are going to keep bringing this up, even though the residents have spoken. We have the council, has the council looked at any alternatives to Republic Services for curbside recycling? I don't think you have people coming in emailing or phoning when there is a service that they don't want that you don't currently have, am I right? So from what I'm hearing, there is two reasons that this is being brought up. Some people have asked that we bring in curbside recycling. Some people have moved from Oklahoma City and surprised we don't have it. The other reason is it would be, make it more convenient for everybody. The company that supposedly is going to handle the curbside recycling is Republic Services. They did make a fine presentation, but alas, they said that the curbside recycling would be mandatory with voluntary participation. Look at the other cities and their recycling programs. Mayor Lewis asked if we were the only city in the metro area that doesn't do recycling. The answer they gave was yes. Even though Republic Services said we have an awesome program, we have a recycling program in Moore. But let's look at some of the other ones. Edmund does have curbside recycling. They charge fifteen thirty-five a month for one cart and one recycling cart. The city of Norman charges fourteen dollars for a cart and three dollars for recycling cart. The city of Mustang has an optional curbside recycling for their residents at a cost of five dollars and fifty cents per month, but you have to sign up at city hall, and you have to have it for at least one year. Nichols Hills does not have a curbside recycling program. You have to call Fertile Ground Co-op, and they take more plastic than what Republic Services do. The Village encourages recycling, but offers no recycling service. The city of Yukon utilizes a recycling center like the city of Moore. According to what I've read, most people won't visit the recycling center because they're too busy. They don't have transportation, or that it's too inconvenient. Unfortunately, these aren't my problems. Now there comes a fee for being charged. From what I saw in the video, it'll be four dollars and thirty cents. Y'all said three ninety-five after they do something. I'm sure the council realizes there are certain people in Moore that four dollars per month would cause an undue hardship. There are senior citizens in Moore that live on a fixed income, and adding money to their sanitation bill will cause them to not be able to purchase food or medicine. There are other residents that work two jobs to make ends meet. While four dollars may not seem a lot to you, it means, it does put an unfair burden to these people. The only way you can be fair to these people is offer them an opt-out option. And from my understanding, this program is a mandatory program with a, for households within the city limits. Even the city of Moore realized that inflation is looming around the corner. So much of that during November twenty-second meeting, the council voted to give a cost of living adjustment to all full and part-time employees in the city. Not everybody that lives in the city of Moore got a cost of living adjustment raise like the city council did, and I praise you for that. And the reason they did that is because there is going to be higher-than-expected inflation and continued rising prices of essential goods, services, and utilities. So you gave the cost of living adjustment, but not everyone in Moore will be treated with the additional monies to help pay for a recycle cart. Now, in order to be a good recycler, you must be trained. The people of Moore that want recycling but can't find the time to visit the recycling center must be able to sort plastics, rinse, and dry them, and make sure that the other products don't contaminate the load. These people that don't have the time to visit the recycling center are suddenly going to find the time to learn to recycle. From what I saw in the council videos, this could take eight or nine months, eight or nine months to learn to recycle from people that don't have the time to drop off recycling at the recycle center. So Republic Services claims to have a ninety-one percent rate in Edmund and Norman, but they didn't tell you is how much of these loads are contaminated by well-meaning people that didn't rinse, clean, dry, or put the wrong kind of plastics in the bin or put in a couple of dirty pizza boxes. From the research I did on recycling, if a load is contaminated, the entire load ends up in the landfill. The Environmental Protection Agency estimates that seventy-five percent of the waste product produced in the United States is recyclable, yet the recycling rate is only thirty-four percent, and the average recycling contamination rate is twenty-five percent, one in every four items. From what I've researched, even if one neighbor doesn't recycle in the correct way, it could contaminate the load, and the load would end up in the landfill anyway. Republic Services say they will need to train more residents on the correct way to recycle. We have sixty-three thousand residents in the city of Moore. Sixty-three thousand people will need to be trained on how to recycle. So if you're going to have a certain number of people that won't recycle, you think it's right to have all the residents of Moore pay for the recycling convenience of a few? To make it more convenient for a few customers to have curbside recycling, there are alternatives. You can give the ability to opt-out program. Even if Republic Services doesn't want to participate in the program, there is a company called Recyclops that offers this service. Recyclops recently worked with the city of Yukon and Piedmont to offer services. The company even offers glass recycling, which Republic Services doesn't do, and it can be done on a household basis and not involve the people that do not want to participate in recycling. So from my understanding, we have already voted this issue down twice. Once that I can remember, the people have spoken. But as you know, people move in and out of Moore all the time in the past decade, and, and that is one of the reasons we're looking over this again. Since people will continue to move in and out of Moore, will we relook at this issue again in four or five years? Will we look at it again in ten years? As for me, I recycle what I wanna recycle and when I wanna recycle, I use the convenient recycling center on my way to Walmart. I don't want the added cost. I went to Edmund this morning and found some of the places that they say that their ninety-one percent is, and I saw more trash cans that were blue sitting upside of the house and the green trash cans by the street. And if you look at, I think on this last page on here, they don't want stuff in plastic bags in the recycling bin. Yet I continue to see it over and over again in Edmund, and these people have had it for a long time, and they've been trained. So I appreciate everything that you all do, and I hope you take everything into consideration when you decide on what we're gonna do on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Howard.
Evening, thank you guys for appearing us this evening. Linda Howard, three one one five South Broadway in Moore. I've been in Moore except for a short stint in the military since nineteen sixty-five. One thing that, and I agree with everything that Barry just said. We have voted on this twice. If you really think this is necessary, then put it before the people and let them vote on it. That's how it should be done, since we have spoken twice that this is not something that, that we desire. And he was saying this too, seventy-five percent, according to EPA, they estimate that seventy-five percent of the trash is recyclable. But if we just cut that down and say fifty percent of it is, say EPA is way off, and fifty percent of it is recyclable. fifty percent of it is recyclable, um, then if, if this, if we do this, what this means is that we will have fifty percent less trash in our, in our garbage cans. So why charge us for something a month? Because there are a lot of us that, that are on fixed incomes. If the city, uh, we pay right now eleven fifty a month for each poly that we have, each polycott that we have, for that to be dumped in the landfill. So that means we're going to have fifty percent less to dump in the landfill, but yet we're going to still be paying the ten fifty. So why not take half of that ten fifty and, and apply it to the, uh, the recycling instead of charging us more for that? That just means that the city will be making another five seventy-five a month off, off of us. So I appreciate you, you guys listening, and I hope you take into consideration the thoughts of the people of this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brooks, do you know how much we paid last year in the landfill cost? Any idea?
Uh, it was several hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I thought. Okay. So we, I mean, it costs us to put mu- like trash in the landfill, so I just want people to know that. I don't have anybody else signed up on this. Anybody want to speak? Okay. I'll let two peoples, either one of you.
Either one of you. Yeah.
I'm Jim Morris, two seven two four Southeast Thirty-Eighth. I've been here eleven years. Couple of things is, uh, to Mr. Lewis, uh, you, you, uh, there is a finite cost to disposing of trash regardless of how you get rid of it.
Right.
And so, yes, that's expensive and it's probably not going down. Uh, I work in Oklahoma City and Mount Trashmore gets taller every year. A lot of people don't know, you ju- you don't just stack it up as stuff percolates down through, water percolates down through that. You've got some major metal problems with the effluent that causes that and the pile keeps collapsing, and we only got so many Mount Trashmoors that we can build. And so we gotta do something. And so I'm in, I'm in favor of, of recycling. Uh, if I had a suggestion, it would be to encourage recycling, I think we got the first cart and second cart prices backwards. Putting, if you swapped the, the costs of the first and second cart, you'd put more in the recycle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but came with my friend and I'm like, oh yeah, I always have stuff to stay on my mind. Um, uh, my name's Alana Childers. I live at fourteen oh four Southeast Fifteenth Street, Moore, Oklahoma, and I've lived here, uh, I lived in Oklahoma since, uh, twenty-ten. So before that, I came from Texas, Dallas, Texas. Do we have any other former Texas people here? Anybody? Come on. Okay, now, when I lived in Texas, um, and it was, you know, Dallas, uh, we had a recycling bin and I hadn't had one before I li- before, uh, or we had one, we had one in Texas, and then when I moved to Oklahoma, I was like, well, where's our recycling bin? We don't have one. And I, it's a little bit embarrassing when Texas does something better than us. I mean, come on, we're, we should be better than Texas. Um, but you know, you kind of get used to it after a while, and so, you know, I didn't think of over it for a few years. And then I started having kids and I have three kids. Um, and then twenty-twenty hit and the world changed dramatically. Um, one of the, the big things that changed in twenty-twenty is that we all started ordering on Amazon. Uh, how many people here, uh, you'll have to raise your hands, but how many people here have an Amazon Prime account? And you need something, you're like, okay, I could go, I could drag three kids to the store or I could order it on Amazon. I mean, think about it. Um, but if you have a lot of Amazon boxes coming, I hate to tell you that, but they're going to fill up your trash can real fast. And I grew up out in the country. Now, uh, when you live out in the country, you take all your cardboard boxes and you put them in your burn barrel. I mean, that's what you do in the country. Sometimes you do have to put out a fire when it, you know, gets out to the yard and stuff, but that happens. But, uh, here in the city of Moore, now I'm a city slicker, uh, you know, can't burn my, uh, you know, boxes in the backyard. Uh, so we have to try to fit them in our trash can, and every single week I'm telling my husband, I'm like, oh, no, 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 don't put the Amazon boxes in the trash. I want to make sure we have enough room. And then, you know, and then we do try to take them to the recycling center. Uh, let me tell you how much fun it is to fit three kids, and one of them's a baby, in your minivan with all your cardboard boxes. Uh, I'll tell you what, that's, that, that's not so much fun. So I think that it would be really important for us to have a recycling program in Moore. Um, first of all, because we want to start attracting a lot of people to move to Moore. Um, young couples, young people, I'm almost forty, so I guess I'm not really a, you know, young couple anymore. I do have a baby. And tell you what, diaper boxes and diapers, yeah, we fill up our trash can pretty fast. But if we want to attract lots of people to come and live in Moore, we want to show that we're up with the needs of people. And I know there's a lot of older residents who are like, well, I've never had a recycling program and I'm fine. And I understand that, you know, change can be hard and weird and we've all gone through a ton of change in the past couple of years. I, there's a, there's, things are starting to go back to normal, but it's been, it's been hard. It's been really hard the past couple of years, especially for those of us with kids. But this is a change that I think would be good for our town, our city, families, and goodness gracious, I mean, look, three bucks? You can't even get a hamburger for three bucks in a lot of places. I mean, that's not much. And we gotta think about our kids as well. You know, I've got a one-year-old. There's a lot of people in this room who won't even be around when my baby graduates from high school. They won't be around when Mount Trashmore, you know, starts getting higher and higher. And it's important for everybody to think about not just what's convenient for us here and now, but do you want my kids to want to continue to live in Moore, Oklahoma? Do you want them to grow up and say, hey, Moore, Oklahoma's an awesome place to live? I want to live here. I don't want to move out or go, you know, somewhere else. I want to live here. I want my grandkids to live here. I mean, I, I want to live in Moore, like, for the rest of my life. I, when my husband and I bought our house, we're like, this is where we want to grow old and die and hopefully our kids will, I mean, not, you know, grow old first. Uh, but we want our kids to love Oklahoma as much as we do and stay here. And so hopefully, as everybody considers the recycling program is an important part of making our city competitive for our kids, because come on, y'all, when I'm a grandparent, I want my grandkids to live here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else signed up? Would council like to talk on this?
Yeah, there's.
I know, but they didn't sign up. So I said we could only take two more and that is it. So does council have anything to say?
I'm okay with it. We want to let a couple more go.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening and thank you for still giving me the chance to speak. Uh, my name's Angela Rosalini. I'm a resident at one twenty-two Brookside. I have been a Moore resident for four years now, and that was by choice. I moved here intentionally to get away from the city I used to live in. And I want you to know a few things about me to understand why I felt so compelled to come talk, even though we're kind of coming to an end of this discussion. First was that I live here by choice. Second is that I'm an Army veteran. I care deeply about my country. I love my country and I love this process. Third, I'm a mother, so I have a three-year-old son and he means the world to me, so I care very, very deeply about the state of the country and what that looks like for future generations. And fourth, I'm a graduate student at the University of Oklahoma. I study environmental sustainability, so of course, this is a topic I'm very interested in and want to discuss. So being a student, I care deeply about the science behind issues. It's more than just feelings, although those are important, and it's more than just the economics, although that is also important. But when you look at the science, it's apparent that recycling is a necessity. It's not something we can continue to put off forever. As we look at the economy changing with recessions, we see that the world is changing in the way it works, we're going to continue having to pay real money for raw material extraction, for transport of raw materials. The least we can do to help reduce those costs is to recycle the materials that are already in use. On top of that, we know, personal beliefs aside, that there is a global crisis with the climate. We know that carbon dioxide emissions are way too high, and something less known at this point is that there's also a methane crisis. This is something that was discussed at the United Nations COP twenty-seven this year. It is accepted by global scientists. It's a known fact right now. So we talk about not diverting our waste from landfills into recycling for whatever reason, but what we don't acknowledge is that landfills are the third-largest anthropogenic source of methane emissions. And if we know that there is a methane crisis, a greenhouse gas that is significantly more potent than carbon dioxide, shouldn't we be doing everything we can to eliminate that? I don't think I'm the only person that feels this way, especially hearing others speaking because they care about their children. They care about all future generations. We care about money. We are in a weird state of the climate, or of the, um, sorry, economy right now. Everyone wants to save money, and yes, for some people, four dollars is a lot. I myself am a disabled veteran. I live off of that disability money. Of course, I don't want to spend more money where I don't have to, but for me and for my family, it would absolutely be worth every penny to do the bare minimum of recycling. Every other city I've ever lived in, which is around ten, does mandatory curbside recycling. We would still be behind the curb with things like recycling glass, recycling plastics three through seven, and with composting. So I truly, truly believe that curbside recycling is the bare minimum we can be doing, and I strongly, strongly support adding curbside recycling to Moore. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Yes, sir. Speaking of service, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Michael Devonich. I live on Manhattan Drive. Uh, in a hundred-and-thirty-year history of Moore, I'm the longest-serving commander, seven years as the American Legion Commander and three years as the Moore VFW Commander. It's the right thing to do. I have a child that lives here. I have a grandchild that lives here. Uh, they recycle. Um, it's important, uh, as we talked about, uh, Mount Trashmore, um, it's just going to get bigger, um, and it's the tallest, tallest, uh, mountain around here. Veterans support it, um, and it's a good thing to do, so, uh, please consider it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Last chance. Okay. Anybody on city council?
My only comment would be, I appreciate everybody that was able to come and to speak on this, whatever your, your position is. I always, it's always exciting when people come to a council. I mean, we would have been out of here, uh, probably thirty minutes ago, but that's all right. I love, uh, city engagement, and I guess everybody else is, we're going to talk about Larry here in just a little bit, and I'm, I'm looking forward to that. But my only, uh, and I would understand the curbside recycling and the convenience and how it would encourage people, uh, and that is not a bad thing. And we do need to do, uh, do, all do our part. My only issue is, is since we have had this gone to a vote a couple of times, that really I believe that the city is divided on this is, this issue. I think it was twenty, it was twenty-sixteen is, is what I'm told, and now maybe the, the pendulum has changed and there's a majority that would, would, uh, vote for curbside recycling. So my only, for me to get behind this and to be supportive of it would be that it go to a vote, uh, of the, uh, people in Moore. And if, if the majority of the people, even if it's just, you know, fifty, fifty-point-one, if they say yes, well then, yes, by all means, let's do it and let's embrace it and, and be the greenest city they're going to be able to be. But I can't, um, not listen to the other half of those people. I rep- want to represent both of them and represent them well. And for one half to not have a voice in this, uh, is wrong from my perspective and my philosophy and I believe how this, this, uh, should work. So I would like to, if we're going to pursue and, and do this, that we put it out, uh, on whenever we could on a ballot, and then the people would vote again, either yes or no. And then we'll, we'll live with that and, and if it, uh, I really think that within, uh, i- if the, the recycling, uh, advocates would do just a little bit of social media campaigning, I think they could probably get it passed. But we need to give the people that live here an opportunity to have a voice, and that would be, uh, that's my two cents to the conversation.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else?
I would say that I, we have received, uh, dozens and dozens of emails on the topic, so I absolutely appreciate it. Um, I've heard an overwhelming yes from the people. I know we voted on this six years ago. Uh, I think it lost by, um, about point one percent or something. I don't remember the exact number, but I want to say it was thirty-five votes. Um, so I'm an advocate of passing it and not passing on the cost of, um, another election to the people because I feel like we have heard from them. Um, but I know tonight's not a vote night, it's to hear what everyone has to say, so I'd encourage you on both sides, um, to continue to have people, uh, email your council, uh, with their feedback.
And I, I agree with, um, Councilwoman, uh, McKenzie. We make decisions every day where we, um, add fees and do things, um, what we feel is best for the city and based on the majority of the citizens. Um, during COVID, we, um, decided that we needed to take away the, you know, to put the trash clippings out of the curb and we didn't, and there were a lot of people who were opposed to that. We didn't send it to a vote of the people. Um, and so I, I, I've received about sixty-some, um, emails and about eighty-six percent of those were in favor of recycling, so.
And, and I, I would go, you know, back to the, the COVID. One of the things that I was proud that our city did is we allowed businesses to decide whether or not a person's going to wear a mask, whereas some cities made it a mandate for their city. Every city's going to do what they think that they need to do and, and I respect that. But Moore has always been its own and it's been, uh, um, different in that way, and, uh, you know, we're just kind of blue-collar people and, uh, I'm okay with that. Um, and, and Brooks, if this were to go to a ballot, would it be, uh, any additional cost to the city or would it be put on a, an election date that is already set by the, uh, election board?
Well, it would be one of the dates, uh, available, uh, that's set by the state election board. So, uh, there were, there's, there's always a cost with an election, uh, and we just would absorb that with, within our budget.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Well, I think tonight we, we decided early on we weren't going to take any action, that we just wanted to hear what people had to say, and I think we've heard that tonight, that, you know, what people want to do. So at this point, I think we'll move on. We'll recess.
One more thing. Do we know when this will be on for discussion, for the council to make a vote on whether we do nothing, send it to a vote, or, um,
We can do it.
Or we do it here?
We can do it whenever you want.
No, I'm, 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 I'm not the decider. I'm just, so everybody kind of knows.
Looking in February?
That's what I was thinking, but it's maybe.
Looking, looking at the first meeting in February.
Okay, perfect. So those that know, perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At, at this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene a public hearing. Okay, we already did that, sorry. At this time, we'll recess the public hearing and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number eleven is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of two million thirty-nine thousand nine hundred eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
Make a motion that we approve the consent docket.
All right, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please, on the consent docket?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, if anybody wants to leave, feel free to do it. We'll take about a three-minute break here.
I think they're all here for Larry.
Do what? They're all here for Larry?
I think they might all be here for Larry.
Okay, never mind. They're ready to go. Just making sure. Usually at the end of one of those, everybody gets up and walks out. Okay. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item twelve is item A, accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of two hundred seventeen thousand, uh, two hundred twenty-eight dollars eighty-four cents. cents.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Cam?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item thirteen is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. And I have quite a few people signed up to speak. Yeah.
What, can, what's the time?
Oh.
Limit for, do we have? Okay, thank you.
Which one?
So, just remember that, that's a five-minute time limit.
And do we want to have?
Oh, wait, we gotta go back and finish twelve?
Yeah, we still need to do twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't we do twelve?
Oh, we did, we did eleven.
Okay.
No, no, we did twelve.
We did twelve.
We did twelve.
Okay, we did.
All right.
We're already on twelve A.
Okay.
Stephanie Jones?
Every time the page changes on this side. Hey, guys. I brought y'all goodies.
Oh, you had Larry in there for a minute.
Larry.
He's had a little bit too much excitement lately.
Has he? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Miss Childers, you get the honor of the four thousand signatures and support Larry.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
I live here in Old Town Moore off Everly Drive. I am a member of the American Mini Pig Association, um, which to pigs, it would be equivalent to the American Kennel Society for dogs. Um, so anyways, last Thursday, my sweet Larry, but I'm Larry's mom, he got out of the yard. Someone had opened his fence, he got out, and he got picked up and became famous. Our local Moore PD posted him on Facebook. It garnered over forty thousand views. It's been shared internationally by different news organizations. Um, but with that being said, when I went to pick him up from the shelter, I was advised at that time that I had two weeks to get rid of him, um, because of outdated ordinance that states the maximum weight is seventy-five pounds and twenty inches. Larry is approximately twenty-two inches tall, and he weighs one hundred forty-four pounds. And so, what I brought for you guys today, which, um, is just a lot of information from the American Mini Pig Association, um, letters from them, letters from veterinarians and other advocates, um, um, there was some citizens also concerned online about things in regards to their property value and how, health hazards and stuff with pigs, and this covers all of it, um, just facts and stuff. Um, so, what I want to do is request to, um, not only let you guys, uh, vote to allow me to keep Larry at home, I've had him for eight years, I've raised him since he's a piglet, but also to review the ordinance and update it based on the recommendations from the American Mini Pig Association. So, thank you, guys. And my phone number's in there if you have any questions about pigs.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
What's, what are you recommending that we change the ordinance to? What would you like to change about it?
The American Mini Pig Association states that, um, pigs weigh an average of a hundred and fifty pounds and twenty inches in height, but there are fourteen different breeds of mini pigs. So, if you want to include all the fourteen breeds of mini pigs, their, their height can get up to twenty-five inches and up to three hundred fifty pounds.
I'm getting close to three fifty.
Okay.
And I assume, just like when you, when somebody gets a dog, it's a puppy, you don't know when you get that pig, what size, necessarily the size of the pig is going to be.
And the worst part is, is there's so much out there about teacup pigs, or how they label them, and they show them in a cute little cup. And if you actually Google mini pig size, the first twenty websites that shows up is greeters who want you to spend thousands of dollars on pigs that are promising that will stay little, which is actually just completely impossible. Um, so that's why the American Mini Pig Association was founded. That's where you can get your miniature pigs certified by them, and, um, I, sorry, I didn't include a picture of Larry's rump in your binders, but the way to tell if a mini pig is of a healthy size is to actually look at their rump, to see if they're overweight or not. And so...
And is Larry, is Larry good?
He is actually between thin and normal. So, he doesn't have any weight to lose.
Yeah.
He's a very good, healthy weight, and also because of the pig anatomy, their bone and muscle structure is more dense, it's actually three times more dense than a dog. So, as Larry is standing next to my seventy-pound German Shepherd, she's longer than him. He's a little taller than her, but he weighs double her weight. So...
Yeah, my, my concern about our ordinance is, so, we allow pigs, so you go get a pig, and you say, this is going to be my family member, and three, four, five years down the road, all of a sudden, the city of Moore says, sorry, they're not your family member because now they're too fat, they have to go elsewhere. And so, um, I would like to see, have staff look and see what can be, what the, I don't know what the remedy is, but I think there is one out there. Um, and then also, I think you were given two weeks also to put a hold on that, um, until we can come up with a solution.
Yeah, I agree with Melissa. I, I think we can find a compromise with, and forgive me, American Mini Pig Association?
Yes.
With their recommended, uh, with their statistics, I think we can find a compromise there, because like Melissa was saying, I, when people purchase a pig and then it becomes part of their family, you, you don't know how big that pig's going to get, and so I think we, we do need to look into it.
Um, another thing to add, dogs are usually full grown within, what, a couple of years? Miniature pigs are not full grown until they are five years old.
I read that. I looked that up, yep.
What's the average life expectancy?
It depends on the breed.
Give me a range.
I, I read twelve to eighteen years today when I looked into this.
My veterinarian had told me eight to ten, and Larry's currently eight years old. So, I, I think it's just like dogs, it's, just depends on how well they're taken care of and stuff.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it before us, and this is one of the best binders I've seen handed out. Very informative.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, you, Brooks, are, are you going to just have the staff look into this, and as they were saying, maybe see what we can do?
Yes, we will.
As far as the ordinance, and not take any action on complicating?
Yes, we'll, we'll, we'll look at this material and, and other material and, and bring a proposal back to council, and there's a administrative hold on the, uh, two-week limit, so you don't have to worry about that.
Yay!
Yeah, Larry's safe.
Thank you!
Okay. Sarah Wilson? Is that Wilson or Washon?
That's it? Washon? Or maybe it's just Wilson?
It's going to be Washon. I'm not sure. It's W-I-S-H-O-N?
Oh, it's me.
There you go.
Hey, Mom, hey, Mom.
Hi. So, I actually, um, you guys are great, and thank you. My name is Sarah Washon, and I'm, um, on Southwest Seventh Street, and I may have a solution on how to adjust the ordinance. I looked at the city of Edmond, and their ordinance is, no swine shall be kept in the city except temporarily in a stockyard awaiting transportation, at a packing house awaiting processing, or at a fair exhibition for purposes of exhibition. This section shall not apply to the keeping within the city of no more than two Asian pot-bellied swine or similar small swine, subject to the following. Each pot-bellied swine shall be a pet that is not to be kept for personal, or that is to be kept for personal enjoyment and not kept or raised for human consumption. There shall be no more than two pot-bellied swine over the age of three months per residence.
Right, there's no.
That's their entire, their entire setup.